Welcome, everyone, to the March 9 City Council Work Session. I should probably say that Counselor Taylor and Counselor Evans are attending the League of Cities meeting, so that's why they are not present. I don't know if Counselor Pauling was going to be on the phone, perhaps. Other than that, we're a relatively small...
You do not have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum. There's no motion.
No decisions.
We're not asking for any motions today. These are just informational items, so...
Right. But we have two interesting and important items. First up is the police operational update, and I probably should say that I requested this because I thought with the opening of more beds and that maybe there would be some changes out there, and we hadn't heard for a while, so I think it's really a good opportunity for us to kind of get an assessment of how things are.
Yeah, Mayor, and I think it's actually a good idea periodically just to come in with an update from our police chief, just generally what's going on and can answer questions, so...
Welcome, Chief.
Hi, thanks for having me. Any opportunity to talk about the police department, you know? The first thing I'd like to point out is that we're working on a strategic plan, and we're taking an approach where our senior staff team has identified the mission statement and then our three objectives and our three values, and we're allowing the organization to work with us to identify what those things all mean. And this year, in in-service, I'm talking about each of those one at a time so they know what my expectations, so the organization knows what my expectations are around each of the values and strategic objectives. The purpose of our strategic plan are these three things, and the most important internally is that it will be developed into a decision-making model. So during this time of change that law enforcement is going through, our officers have a little less confidence on the street every day because they don't know how their decisions that have customarily been considered to be good decisions, they don't know how they're going to be considered in the light of the new expectations for law enforcement. So this is a good time for us to do this, and our mission statement is to work together with the community to reduce crime, make Eugene safer, while safeguarding constitutional rights of all of our community members. And this is our definition for integrity, and I'll talk a little bit about some of these, and compassion, which I'm speaking on this month. It introduces a couple of new concepts that I'll talk about here in a little while, too. And then courage. And Plato, you know, identified four fundamental virtues for humanity: prudence, justice, temperance, and fortitude; or wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage. And he says this is the most important one because the others require this often. And then our three objectives are to keep Eugene safe, build trust, and to have an outstanding workforce. And every member of the department should know that it isn't exclusively the responsibility of the downtown team to make downtown safer, or exclusively the responsibility of the traffic team to reduce crashes, or investigations to reduce felony crimes. We all have a role, and it's going to be important that we all know what each of those roles are. And I think we've actually done a very good job of building trust in the community. When we rolled these values and objectives out to the supervisors initially for their input, they made it pretty clear that they think building trust within the organization is important. You know, we have an unforgiving internal affairs process that is, can be intimidating, and that and the other management decisions we make together are things that they wish could be more transparent. And so we have work to do internally, like a lot of organizations, I think. And then the goal here is to establish a workplace where everyone has an opportunity to be healthy, to be emotionally well, where they can be trusted and respected, and they can thrive in their careers. Two new concepts that I'm introducing this month are these two right here. After Ferguson, a great deal of work has been done on what the world thinks the 21st century policing should look like. The Police Executive Research Forum produced 30 recommendations on use of force, and they've gotten quite a little reaction in the law enforcement community. Some are pretty fearful that if we implemented all of these, we'd be making our officers' jobs a lot more dangerous. And it's a legitimate fear that we have to work through, and I don't think we could wholesale adopt the 30 recommendations, but we do need to be thinking about how we could do work differently in order to make our officers safer and the people that we arrest safer. This first item, proportionality, is the question of whether or not the measure of our intervention into criminal conduct or behavior on the street is proportional to the need. So I'll give you a couple of stories. Not long ago, one of our officers had developed a case to arrest a homeless guy who was living by the river in a van underneath Belt Line. If you've ever been there, it's that really rocky beach where there's, in the wintertime, swift, pretty swift, high waters. And so the guy has committed some identity thefts and felonies, and the officer and others went down there to arrest him. He saw them coming, and he ran out into the river, this was about 10 o'clock at night, and submerged himself in the water. And so they ran to the edge of the water and started to think about what kind of rescue operations they need to put into place. And then he also had a warrant for his arrest. Then he eventually stands up, and they start communicating with him, and he has behavioral health conditions. And they talk and talk and talk, and the officers are recognizing that they could go into the water and try and to arrest him, but they may die doing that. He might, it would be exposing him to some pretty great danger. So they negotiate their way through this and decide to issue him a citation, and they won't arrest him for the warrant. And he agrees. He comes out of the water, receives the citation, goes back to his van, and they leave. So that's a pretty good example of the kind of thinking that has to go into this. It isn't uncommon in law enforcement to say, no, we're going to pull, we've decided to arrest him, we'll bring in whatever resources are necessary in order to make that arrest safely, but an arrest is going to happen. Well, in this case, it wasn't absolutely critical. Another illustration is a case where a homeless man, all of his belongings in a shopping cart, two bags of bottles and cans that he probably collected over the previous day, he's not a very stable person, and he's furious. He goes into the coin-operated laundromat at 17th and Pearl, and they ask him to leave, he won't leave. Officers show up, they talk to all the parties, and they eventually learn that the reason he wouldn't leave is because he felt that they owed him a dollar. And so he agreed that if he was paid his dollar, he would leave. And so somebody, I don't know if it was the officer or the manager, gave him a dollar, he left, and that was fine. And if the officer has also issued him a citation for trespassing, that would have been good, too. But what could have happened is that we would have been determined to make the arrest. We wouldn't have learned why he was upset. He would have seen that he's about ready to lose all his worldly possessions and his cans and bottles. It could have been a heck of a fight. Somebody probably or likely would have been hurt. Most homeless people have to carry knives in order to get things done. If he'd have got his hands, you can see how it could have escalated into something horrible over disagreement over how much he was owed by this place. So that's going to become a very important part of how we calculate what our interventions should look like as we arrest people or we try to help people. And then the other one that is worrisome to some in law enforcement is this issue of sanctity, the sanctity of life. And most police agencies have this order of life protection, and some will say that we will do everything we can first to protect the community member, the innocent bystander, and then the police officer, and then the subject that's brought us to the place that is posing the danger. And for me, what this means is that we will absolutely do what we can to protect the police officers. So we don't want to do anything that puts them at greater risk than they would be in yesterday's practices and policies. We should do things that put them in greater safety while at the same time doing everything we can to protect the life of the subject that has brought us to whatever the episode is that we're dealing with. And so it's that, it's going to be a matter of focusing intensely on how can we, what can we do? How can we delay our approach to this? Or how can we make distance, time, cover, so that we're not in a place where we could suddenly find ourselves having to use deadly force? Accomplish the same things without exposing ourselves to having to use deadly force. So they're chewing on that today, after I spoke with them. The next steps for this are that a number of volunteers, managers in the department have agreed to work on the strategic plan, and the next step is to come up with some dashboard-type of measures or metrics for each of these strategic objectives. Keeping Eugene safe, building trust, and an outstanding workforce. What measures could we use that would help us know if we're moving the needle, and then we'll see what initiatives we could put in place to get us there. Some changes that we've made in the last few years, and one that's happened in this month, have to do with forcible stops and vehicle pursuits. You know, the objective for all three of these has changed. Four years ago, I decided that the purpose of these things is to, of these techniques is to protect lives, to save lives, and apprehend dangerous offenders. And previously, anybody who ran a red light or was in a stolen car, we'd chase them until eventually they crashed, or we crashed, or they pulled over. Pursuits are extremely dangerous things for police to do, so I changed the threshold so that we only pursue for dangerous felonies, violent felonies, and to protect lives. And so that was a shift for us in thinking. At the same time, I told them that they can use, our officers can use, these pursuit intervention techniques, which is this dynamic way of nudging a car off of its, into a skid so that it comes to a stop. It's a pretty safe and effective method. The disparity between our pursuit thresholds and the lower level for the pursuit intervention technique threshold has sort of caused our officers to violate the pursuit policy. And so this month, I'm changing that. They'll both be the same. So in order to use their car to stop a fleeing suspect, they can only do that if it's a violent felony or they're posing significant risk to life in the way they're driving. And then the other thing is the spike strips. You probably all have heard of these. Officers will place themselves on a runway where they think the pursuit is going to go, and then they'll slide the spike strips out in front. It punctures the tires. There isn't a nationwide policy or practice around these things. There are best, there are good practices, but this is a product that was introduced by vendors. It wasn't invented by law enforcement. And what I learned when we went back for the National Memorial Ceremony in 2012, I think it was, learned that a lot of officers are dying while deploying these things, is it's hard to practice deploying these in a car that's going 80 miles an hour. And so they miscalculate, or just a slight change in direction by the suspect driver, and officers were dying, and it just isn't worth it because most people are fleeing because they ran a red light, or they're in a stolen car, or that kind of thing. So our pursuits have gone from about 25 a year to around four a year, and our officers are doing a great job with it. Probably one of the biggest challenges we have right now is around staffing. 25 or 30 years ago, a lot of people retired, or were hired, and now they're retiring. And so we've, so a little more than a year ago, we created a recruitment team, and they have a volunteer who professionally does recruitment for a local company, and they've been very, very effective. We've seen a 73 percent, I think it's on the next slide, increase in the number of applicants while police agencies around the country have only seen declines in the number of people applying. But the difficulty for us right now is that we have people in training while we have the vacancies we wish that they were occupying operationally, so that's what creates this present gap of, operational gap of 19. That's our people in training and the academy, plus the vacancies. And as more people retire this fiscal year, we expect four more this fiscal year, we'll be up to 25, just as those recruits are starting to get out on the street. And then potentially another four or five more will retire before the end of the calendar year. Patrol is down 12 officers operationally, and that's placed quite a burden. That's out of about 80 officers. And then the traffic enforcement is down two positions. They normally have seven officers, they have five. Property Crimes Unit will be down four here in a little bit as some officers transfer to the Violent Crimes Unit. And we normally have two detectives in INET, but we're about ready to only have one when we transfer one of those. So the key will be to, we'll develop a plan that shows when officers are going to be cut loose and be filling a position in patrol, and what the threshold will be in patrol when we can start filling those special teams and the detectives' assignments. Assignments that I absolutely want to keep filled are things like our contracts, you see up there, school resource team in the airport, in the business district. But our Violent Crimes Unit deals with some pretty high-stakes cases. Most or many involve little kids who are the victims of serious crimes, and so we cannot go short in there. We don't have enough detectives as it is, so going below what's authorized would be bad. And then our Special Investigations Unit is a sergeant and two detectives, and they handle online child crimes, crimes against children, and then organize crime that's like street gangs and outlaw motorcycle gangs, and threats against public officials, and those kinds of things that we always have to be ready to deal with well. And then our Downtown Team, because of the commitment the city's made there, we're doing everything we can to keep that staffed up now. There's one vacancy that we're, we have a process to fill today. As I said, recruitment is up, applications are up 73 percent, and the better we do at this, the harder work it is for our department. Instead of one week of, or excuse me, two weeks of interviews, for instance, this time I'll have three weeks. Instead of, you know, fewer than 100 early background questionnaires, we have 150. So it's a, we have fewer people to do the work, but, you know, it's kind of a good problem to have, I guess. Okay, so the things that are hardest on our workforce right now, the things that we're working to address are the staffing shortages. That's placing a significant burden on our patrol office, we're sergeants. There's a lot of overtime, a lot of drafts, and a lot of calls for service. So that's why we're doing everything we can to fill those positions as quickly as we can. The IA process, it takes longer than anybody wants it to. Every investigation takes longer than we want it to. It feels unpredictable to the employees affected, and it's just a very intimidating thing to go through. The Auditor's Office does a great job of supporting us. Mark and Leah bring a good, bring the right balance and wisdom to it, recognize that in a lot of cases, it's, there's changes the organization needs to make rather than simply the employee needs to be held accountable. So we're working, Assistant Chief Durr has met with the union leadership a couple of times to ask what we can do differently with the process, and we're working through some of those ideas. And then the assignments that we make, the special teams and investigations, tend to be a frustration because we don't have a rotation policy for those highly sought-after jobs. And both the union and I would like to see a rotation policy. The question is all in how it's developed, what it looks like, and how it's implemented. We have yet to come up with a good way to do it that we both like, and so it's the one item, it's one item that I'll be introducing during contract negotiations. And then for data-led policing, when we started the new Sun Guard system, that's our report, online report-writing system, that slowed down our ability to produce reports that are used for data-led policing. And so we're taking some time right now to step back and ask, what does the crime analysis reporting need to look like for the senior staff team to think strategically about how we should be reducing crime effectively, particularly in the new sort of era of law enforcement? And what operationally do our watch commanders and sergeants need in order to effectively reduce crime? So we're taking a minute right now to review all that, rethink it, and then we'll have a single position as I'm able to contemplate what changes to our leadership structure could look like now with Assistant Chief Durr taking a job, a police chief's job in Tennessee. What could we do differently? And one thing we'll have is a single point of leadership for data-led policing that can coordinate patrol and investigation. So I think in time, we'll find that we're pretty effective. And then when I sit down with our supervisors and ask them what the big issues are, this is what it is. It's behavioral health and homelessness. We, you know, they think very carefully about how they go to people in crisis who are armed, and they recognize that we want to do everything we can to save their lives. Doing that while protecting the public and not putting our officers at risk is a very demanding and tricky thing to do, and I think they've done an extraordinarily good job. There aren't enough resources available. You know, these aren't, the people that fall into that category, high-risk armed subjects, are not the highest frequency users of our criminal justice system, and so they don't, you know, we normally don't learn, the police don't normally learn about them until it's too late, and it's in, we're in disaster mode. And there isn't enough services that they can be introduced to here in Lane County, so that's a concern for us. And then the street people that are disorderly and intimidating, that we run into frequently downtown and West University, those, our officers feel as though that's basically all they do most of their days, is work with those folks. And I think the future will be a multidisciplinary team of mental health worker, police officer, social worker, emergency medical technician, that sort of approach. And that's being contemplated in a number of different arenas right now. We also spend a great deal of time going to homeless camps. The Washington-Jefferson Park takes constant attention. Somebody said that not long ago, they saw 35 people camping on the stage there. Sometimes there's no one, but sometimes there are a lot of people there. We go to a lot of subject-down calls, which aren't anybody who's sick or hurt, that's someone who's sleeping or sleeping one-off. The prohibited camping calls are common, and then the unsanctioned camps consume a great deal of energy for the city. I understand that the last unsanctioned camp, the hours camp, is feeling as though they're done. They're sort of exhausted, can't maintain the pace any longer, and so they're going to find an alternative. So we may, could be that we won't have to deal with that so much now. The Lane County jail beds have helped. It's hard to see a really clear correlation. I'll show you a slide in a second that shows that when the jail beds went up, there's an immediate and dramatic decline in property crimes. The reason for that is that the property crime rate is so high and our ability to make arrests is so low, you know, we have a low capacity for it, that it's going to take time to see the kind of change that we're hoping for. You'll see that there is a little bit of a change. And Patty Perlow has found a way to prosecute another 100 lower-level felonies, but felonies every month, and I know that that's making a difference. So being able to hold people in jail so that they're not going out and continuously committing the same felony has been better. What you see here is the dotted line, or the line with the white dots, is property crime between January 14th and February 16th. The blue-gray border is the increase in jail beds here. And in April of 15, it went way up, and then in January of 15, went up a little bit further. I think it's, we're right now at the highest number of jail beds that they're going to have. And what you see is this gradual decline since that happened, as we're able to hold people a little more accountable. Property crime is seasonal. You know, it comes up at the beginning of the school year and then comes down in the wintertime, and this increase is a little less dramatic. So the increase in this winter was very high, last winter was a little bit lower, this winter is a little bit lower, and I think that's what's driving this improvement here. So I think we can say that there probably is a relationship between the increased jail beds and that trend that we'll see there. This is one of the regular maps and charts that we get. This map just shows where stolen cars, commercial burglaries, residential burglaries happen. They're always concentrated in the same place. That's always going to be that way. The good news here is that when we compare the first four weeks this year, right here, to the first four weeks of 15 and 14, you can see that in this year, it looks like crime is, the property crimes are coming down. Commercial burglaries are a little bit better, other burglaries are better, UUVs, stolen cars, that's improving. So you can see we're definitely trending in the right direction. A lot of concern about what's happening downtown, and what this chart shows is the officers' self-initiated activity. This just tells you really, when the officers are, this is more an indication of when the officers are on the street and what they see while they're there. It always comes down a little bit in the winter months. It came down this last winter. Because of our staffing shortages, requirements for jail arraignments, working on background investigations for new hires, the officers were probably on the street a little bit less, but they were there when they needed most, and they were less present when the need was less. This slide shows the dispatch calls for service just in what's defined as the downtown corps, and there's just a steady increase of need for policing services, judging by the number of times that someone picks up a phone, calls 911 or a non-emergency line and says, we need the police down here. And then our downtown, let me see where we are. Good. Our downtown team has a new sergeant. See if I can point her out here, right there. That's Sergeant Julie Smith, and she's pretty creative. She was a bicycle officer at one time. And so her, the strategy for this summer, for this year, is for the officers to spend, be as visible as they possibly can downtown, and to introduce themselves to the people that hang out on the street and are down there and are intimidating, get to know them as well as they can, appropriate, sort of develop a portfolio for each person of the kind of services that they would need, the conditions that they have, and experience, and a little bit about their family, whether or not there's a network out there that could be supporting this person, so they don't have to be a kid, or they're a veteran, or they're someone with needs that could be addressed by a service that's available here. So that's how they're going to approach things. Julie, just this morning, shared with me a story about how they got a complaint from someone who used to have their kid in the daycare at Newberry's across from the deck. Newberry's takes the kids, yeah, the daycare takes the kids from there and walks them to the library. And so many ugly things happen sometimes between there and the library that this guy said, I just took my kids out. It just didn't feel safe, you know? Sorry. So the downtown team is going to Newberry's, and it's got little gift packages for kids, you know, that have police coloring books and hats and badges and stuff. And it's tough work competing with the fire department because they got, and they're going to walk them to the library, and they're going to do some reading there and that sort of thing, and do what they can. So those are the kinds of, that's an example of the kinds of relationships that they're trying to build. So that's what I've got for you.
Thank you, Chief. Can I check what time it is?
It is 12:29.
Well, I'm almost right. Okay. Mike, you're up.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Forgive my voice here, I'm kind of getting cold. First of all, I guess what I'm interested in, I appreciated the first part of that presentation with the change in national standards, kind of a look at respect for life and the other piece that you mentioned. How would you characterize, what's the difference in your eyes between that new approach and how you see it implementing in the department, and what might be more commonly referred to as de-policing? How would you characterize the difference?
Yeah, I think, well, de-policing is what they experienced in Baltimore and Chicago, where, you know, there were some pretty outrageous... where, you know, there were some pretty outrageous, outrageous and publicized police misconduct, and police officers felt like, most of the time, we're following policy and it looks like you're getting a lot of trouble, a lot of bad publicity around that, nationwide publicity. There's the fear of being Youtubed, and so in those two cities, just as examples, they're not the only ones, police officers went out and stopped contacting people. And we're not seeing that. What I'm asking our officers is to do what most of them already do pretty well, make those contacts, be as assertive as we can be in trying to reduce crime and spending our time with the right offenders, but do it in a way that treats everybody with the highest level of respect and compassion. And the truth is, just from a really, from a fairly cold perspective, is that empathy is a pretty powerful law enforcement tool. We're likely to get more compliance, we're likely to get more confessions, we'll get, we'll make more arrests of the right people that are committing those crimes, and it builds more trust with the community. So I don't see it as less policing, it's just, it's a style that we need to be more intentional with.
Okay. Will that, excuse me, I know there's some national standards around that. Will there be, will we see that a police commission to kind of review policies whole-scale at all over that?
For the police commission's packet this week, I included my presentation last week on integrity, and then next month you'll get one on compassion and so on, and so you'll be able to see, these should inform the police commission's thinking on our policies. So I don't think we're going to see a dramatic change in those, but I hope that over time we see a shift in the purpose of each policy is.
Okay, okay. You mentioned this, the vacant positions and the staffing shortage, I guess is what you would call it. And I'm wondering, against what standard that, the shortages exist, under previous budget, or where we've been for a few years, or, because I know we did a study, or there was a study, there were a couple of them done, and it's been a few years ago now, it's probably been eight or nine, against community expectations of policing and what our staffing levels are and what it would require from the national folks who conducted those for us. So where is, where are those shortages measured against? Previous budget, that standard, where are we relative to that?
Every department in the city has a number of authorized positions for each classification, so that's what those numbers represent.
Just previous budget period?
Yeah, the budget that we're in, we have 191 sworn positions authorized, and so we're short four of those.
How would you characterize our previous budget levels to that, those studies I made reference to from a couple of years ago, from just prior?
Well, every study we've had has found that we could use, you know, a third more, twice as many police officers than we have in order to implement community policing. But we're pretty normal, we're a little below average for the Pacific Northwest, but it's not unusual for us.
Compared to population?
Yes. This Pacific Northwest has the lowest policing per capita than any other region in the United States.
Did any of your report here include the 911 center?
No, these were sworn positions.
Okay.
At the moment, we're fully staffed in the 911 center, and we're over-hiring six positions next week.
Oh.
It's very challenging to maintain.
That's, that's the reason I was going to ask. I know that's kind of an ongoing issue.
I should have included that, now that you mention it. Do you mind if I talk about that for just a second? The, we hired a consultant last year, ESCI, and they prepared recommendations for us. Before we hired him, I invited the police union to join with us to select the consultant. So together we picked the consultant, together we received the report from the consultant, and together, along with the fire department, we're implementing those. Thursday and Friday this week, we'll all be together in strategic planning for the implementation of all that. So we're making progress, it's slower than you'd want it to be, but...
I know that we've had some shortages there, and I personally couldn't do that work. I mean, that would take a toll on me emotionally, I'm sure. That's difficult stuff. Is it, is it our policy moving forward to maintain sufficient supply of folks that we won't ever fall short again, or not ever is a pretty strong word, but I guess the better question is, how high of a priority is that for you that we don't run short-staffed in that center again?
Well, it's a, it is a high priority. It is, like, as you said, very hard work to do because an employee sits for 10 hours taking emergency calls from hysterical people, and it's a very, very difficult thing to do well. And we end up drafting a lot in there because any one vacancy affects everybody who's in there. When we, if we were fully, as we are fully staffed, if everybody were trained, we wouldn't have enough employees working for us to fill all the shifts. We'd still have to hire on overtime to fill all the shifts. So we're at a disadvantage even in our best day of staffing out there, so it's important that we try and stay ahead of it.
As a last question here, I only have 20 seconds left. I guess I would say that as we head into the budgeting process, that's a pretty high priority for me. I would want to know, I don't know, I guess I'll talk about it with the manager, that's the appropriate way to do this, but I think we should have more than enough staff there, but, as it's so critical. But we'll talk about that later, I'm sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Claire.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the briefing, and just wanted to call out a couple of specific things that I especially appreciate. I really like your framing around proportionality. I think I've shared with you before in my former work as with ACLU of Oregon, I reviewed hundreds of use-of-force reports from various police departments around the state on the use of tasers, and remember some cases, many, many cases where the taser was used on someone who was charged with resisting arrest, but prior to that really hadn't done anything wrong, or anything that would have required a use-of-force response, but in the course of being contacted, had a reaction to that contact that then caused the officer to think that the taser was the appropriate way to go. And I'm not necessarily referring to EPD in those reports, you know, Medford, Corvallis, Albany. And I remember one example apropos of your story about the, a man that was camping down by the river where a person ran from the police, they didn't know why he ran, he jumped into the river, and they attempted to tase him while he was in the river, which one would think would not be a good idea with an electrical current. So that, you know, so I think this idea of what are we trying to accomplish in this contact versus we've come to take control of the scene and that's, that justifies all the actions we take. So I think thinking about proportionality is very important, and I think will actually serve our officers better in the long run in terms of their own mental health and physical health. I also want to appreciate, and I've said this before, either at a police commission meeting or a city council meeting, the change in policy around pursuits. I think you've done, you, along with the support of the police auditor, have done a real service to the community in reducing danger to, you know, innocent bystanders by making that policy pretty tight in terms of when it's allowed and when it's not. And I guess I'll just say, it's too bad we can't get Springfield to adopt a similar policy so we won't have them chasing people into Eugene and crashing in front of businesses as happened about a year ago in front of Elkhorn for a stolen vehicle. So then I just had a couple of, the other thing I wanted to call out was, very glad to hear about the dialogue and collaboration with union leadership. I know I've also mentioned at police commissions, the idea of labor management committee structure as being, you know, a fairly common practice in unionized workplaces, and so I'm glad to see at least some, you know, attempt at that collaboration. I had a couple more comments, I'll take a second round.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you. Great presentation, very thought-provoking in a number of ways, and I'm kind of stricken by the fact that the police department is currently in an effort to try to figure out what to do and how to do it. And to take the second part first, I think in watching your presentation, I'm very pleased with the efforts you're making on how you do it. I think the discussion around proportionality and around sanctity of life and other things are good, good ways to do it the right way. When I look at the caseload of the auditor's office and I look at the complaints, so many of them are not around what the police did, but how the police did it. Complaints about service or complaints about conduct, or they're all, the police need to do it in a way that is responsive and effective, and I think you're making great strides in that area, and so I just wanted to compliment you on the effort I think you're doing around how to do it. But getting back to the notion of what to do, I was very pleased to see you're working on your mission and your, on your goals and your strategies, because if an officer doesn't know why we're doing it or what it is we're supposed to do, then they can be troubled about how they are supposed to execute that. And so I think getting clarity around that's very important, and you know that we have a role in helping the police department determine what to do, because in many respects, we guide you on what to do based on what we establish as priorities and policies. And I know for me, when I talk with constituents, I don't hear my constituents talk a lot about murders or violent attacks or other kinds of felony crimes. What I, what I, I know they are concerned about it, and it's all important, but what I hear folks talk a lot about are kind of nuisance behavior, property kinds of crimes. And so when I looked at the staffing statistics up there, one of the first things that struck me was, wow, we're way down in patrol, we're down in, you know, nuisance and property crimes. We can't ignore the other areas, but, and this gets back a little bit to what Mike was talking about, I think we need to, in order to be as responsive to our community as we can, we need to think about how we can increase our ability to respond to our community around those kinds of crimes, because that's, that's what, for many of them, is the way they define policing. Are you there when someone breaks into my car? Are you there when someone does something on my property? Are you there for me? And too often, we're not there. And I spend a lot of time responding to people saying, "I'm sorry the police didn't come out. Please continue to report the crimes because patrol schedules are built around reported crime." But for me, it's an issue that we need to continue to address and figure out how we can do that, and whether it happens in the budgeting process or whatever. You're doing a great job around building the how-to, but we need to work with you to figure out how to properly fund and enforce the what-to pieces well.
Alan?
Yeah, sorry for being late. I had a work meeting that they shifted the time on me and it was unavoidable. Something that Chris said sparked, one of the big complaints that I hear a lot about is people running red lights. And in fact, in the last month, I've witnessed several of them, and it seems to be getting worse. And, you know, I'll be sitting at a stoplight and it'll go to green and vroom, the car will go through it. And I'm, a while ago, we talked about the cameras, but I believe we decided not to do that because it was very complicated and very expensive, in the tunes of $100,000 per intersection, and, but, and the fact that patrol is down means that we're not looking at that as much. Yeah, can you talk about that a little bit, Chief?
Yeah, Lane County saw the highest increase in traffic fatalities in 2015 of any other county in Oregon. And I think traffic fatalities are up around the nation, across the nation, and there may be a number of things factoring into that. We could all guess what they are, but driving and texting and cell phones are probably contributing to it. Having fewer deputies and troopers on the road is definitely kind of creating this lawless atmosphere out there. And I think in Eugene, we do an extremely good job with the engineering part. There's, you know, the three components to reducing, sort of making safer, motoring is education, enforcement, and engineering, and we do a really good job with engineering. We can do a lot of public information, but there's just a limit to how many officers we can have in the right place at the right time. The most predictable crime maps we have, I mean, we could do, we could use the same ones from 2013 and they'd be just as valuable today, show when and where crashes happen. You know, it's after work, on the Ferry Street Bridge, and the Delta and Beltline and Six and Washington, you know? So I think it has a lot to do with our presence and the technology all of us have in our hands, unfortunately.
Is there anything we can do about people blowing through red lights?
Yeah, there's a couple of things that we've done, that we're looking at now. On the Ferry Street Bridge, for instance, this doesn't help with red lights, but it helps with that interchange northbound from underneath where the E-Web offices are.
Oh, yeah.
We, Public Works created a little path where our motorcycles can set up so that they can look to their left, see the violation, safely pull down the traffic and make the stop. So that's, we're looking for ways to do that. The other, the other problem is that for an officer, in order to be able to see the red light, to see that it turns to red and the violator goes through, means that if it's at Seventh and Chambers, imagine how big that intersection is, they then have to work their way through traffic and hopefully find the violator.
Yeah.
So what agencies have done, or what cities have done, is they put a blue light on the back of that red light, the red-yellow-green indicator, so the officer can be downstream, essentially. And if the blue light comes on, the red has gone, anybody. So we're looking at installing those to make it a little more effective.
I like that idea.
I like cameras.
The other, the other one, I like that idea a lot. Is that very expensive?
I think it's affordable, and we're going to start experimenting with some.
And you wouldn't do it everywhere, you'd do it on the problem intersection?
We'll start where there's the most crashes.
The other one I was interested in, it was maybe a year or two ago, you did a presentation, and one of the other things that people, and I think this seems to have gotten a little better, was people just not pulling over for first responder vehicles, ambulances and firefighters and cops just not pulling over. You don't know the rule, just stop, and pull over to the side and stop. Don't keep inching around and making everybody nervous. But has that gotten, you know, if that's gotten better, or is that?
We don't have any way to measure that.
And can we measure it?
The expectation of the officers, I haven't heard much about that.
You haven't heard that?
At the beginning of the school year, you know, a similar item is the school buses. So we do a lot of enforcement in the school zone, and we follow the school buses around and find people that run the stop sign.
Right, right. Thanks.
So I'm going to, we want to get to the next item when our agenda, Doris, talk, and very quickly you, and then we'll close this particular topic out.
I'll be brief. Thanks for the presentation, Chief. A lot of really good, good things to move forward, I think, that'll improve operations and interactions with the community. And I'm particularly interested in the idea about the staffing downtown this summer will be fully staffed, and there's a new, we try this new way to engage people and get to know them and try to, I mean, of course, still go after criminals, not lighten up on that, but, but engage the other people, the so-called street people in a different way. I think it's very promising to try to learn more about them, and, because they are humans and everyone's got a story, and I think that's a great idea. And then help them get services that they need, but along, and I'll be really interested to see how this develops. But, you know, and then we're, we're going to be having our budget committee meetings coming up, and so along with this, I think, we haven't seen the budget forecast yet or the manager's recommended budget yet, but I have a feeling that we're going to have more revenues going into general fund. And if that's true, if that feeling is right, I think that we need to get serious about increasing funding for human service commission, try to build more affordable housing, try to open up many more rest stops, try to get some money for mental health services, increase that, whatever we can do, because then the officers will have someplace to send people. I mean, it's one thing to get to know somebody and try to help them on, you know, but if there's no, if we don't have more places to send them to, it won't make any difference in a way, you know, other than just the human contact. So, just a comment there. Thank you.
Claire?
Yeah, my comment was along the same lines. Basically, request to you that as you continue to work with this multidisciplinary team framework, if you would please let us know what resources this council might be able to provide to support the work, which may not be housed in your line item of the budget. But just like we've added funding for cahoots and we are scoping out the potential for a community court, you know, I think hearing from you what you think are going to be the the most bang for our buck in terms of additional resources or programs, that would be very, very valuable as we think about what, you know, our choices are in terms of the budget. And then my other thing was just a question, you had the abbreviation INET up there and I didn't know what that stood for.
Well, that's our, the county's inter-agency narcotics enforcement team.
Okay. Thank you. Real quickly, I took note last week, there is a big blurb about, they've been tracking people who zoom past school buses around the country. And there's a real huge uptick in people just totally ignoring, in fact, they're putting blinking lights on the, on the sign going out the side of the buses just to try to get more, people to pay more attention. So it is, it is, it is a big issue. We are working on Vision Zero and that's an opportunity to try to move the dial a little bit on these stop traffic lights and stuff like that. And the only other thing that I wanted to say to you is, I, I think the important, I think the police story is part of the city story as opposed to a separate story. And I hope that we'll figure out how to tell that story as part of the department within the city, that we have goals as a city for what we would like to have happen in our city. Here's what we, what you're doing in your department, head in that direction and begin to sort of unfold this for the public in a way, and in a very intentional way as you work through this. I know you, you're spending a lot of time on this strategic planning and all of this, but I, I think it's so helpful for the public to know where you're going and what you're trying to do, because it changes their impression, it changes their view, it changes how they see our officers, it changes everything when they know what it is we're aimed at. And so I would just, for both of you, say that we really need to paint that picture for the public of where, where we hope to go and what we hope to provide as if, most of the time when the, when the police are in the papers, how they're responding to something as opposed to the direction that we want to go as a community. And I think this community would be very happy and relieved to know that you, of things that we understand and things that we're working on and have intentionality about. So I, I think that would be worth some, some real thought about how to, and as you know, you have to tell it over and over again before it permeates into society. But I think it's a really important thing and it'll.
Seven times.
Yeah. And it'll save us a lot in terms of our community relationships. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much, Chief. And C Manager, I really appreciate this and I think it is a good idea for us to have regular check-ins with each other.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, next up is legislative update.
Turn it over to Ethan. Good afternoon, everybody. Ethan Nelson, Inter-Governmental Relations Manager. Good to see you all. So I've got a legislative update for you today, and it's got basically segmented it down into two different parts. And hopefully there's time for discussion after each part. So first part will be about legislative process and an update on how the 2016 short session went. And then part two will kind of go for highlights of the United Front trip. And so the materials that are in front of you are for that United Front section. So part one, just as a refresher, the IGR committee met on January 27th this year to discuss the city's 2016 legislative priorities. Summary of this meeting, the IGR AIS and the final legislative priorities were made available in the February 9th memo, mayor and council. Within the packet of information was the reference to the February 2013 council resolution that mapped out a revised legislative process that we've been implementing since that time. So really, what I want to spend time on is quite a walking through what that process is. And it's basically in three different parts. You know, to give you the overview, there's identify priorities and outcomes, lobby accordingly, and then also increased communications around that. So for starters, the stated goal within the resolution is to become more efficient and effective in our lobbying process. And as with many goals, you know, efficient and effective is somewhat broad and fuzzy. And so I, for, I offer that efficient really means staff time across the organization is spent on the legislative process in an effective manner. And effective really means that we have clearly articulated priorities and outcomes that our efforts and resources are dedicated towards. And so it's really, if we're thinking about the process as efficient, time and resources and effective, we've identified our outcomes and then we're working towards those. So identify priorities and outcomes. This was accomplished through a sequential process. It started with condensing council goals, C code, and adopted plans into a document. And that's been available in some form or fashion regarding legislative priorities for a number of years. So the legislative priorities document, this outlines the broad positions on items of importance to the city. We maximize the use of our staff in a focused manner to provide content, analysis, and impact as they relate to the legislative priorities. While almost any topic can be shoehorned into the realm of importance, staff really integrates the effective goal to narrow down those legislative items that present the greatest impact to the organization and the community. This is an iterative and collaborative process across the organization and leverages the incredible talent and connections within the city and the community. Our team of internal legislative coordinators are highly skilled professionals with years of experience and knowledge within their respective fields. Additionally, many staff are members of statewide, national, or international professional associations. And these associations keep members informed with critical analysis for pending legislation and at the state and federal level. We also rely heavily upon, and I think we rely upon the legal org, their legislative priorities process to identify upcoming bills and legislative concerns to incorporate into that policy envelope. And then kind of at the end, once we've really packaged on up and we've gotten what it is our legislative priorities are going to do, then we run it through another filter and that's working with our contract lobbyist, Elizabeth Howe. And her understanding of pending legislation at the state level, relationships with elected legislators and senior departmental staff, and understanding such as Chief Currents, and understanding of where Eugene can be most effective with our efforts is applied and is applied to our legislative priorities to add, remove, or edit various position statements. So once we've done all of that work, then we go and we vet it with the IGR committee and with the city council. And so we present that to the IGR committee, and then after reviewing and commenting on the document, it becomes final for the section forward to the city council. And so that's the process that we were involved with, that we put forth this last year. And then we also, once we have those priorities, we then work with our federal lobbyist contractor, Smith Dawson Andrews, to provide any insight on impacts and fund and opportunities at the federal level for Eugene's priorities. And an example of that would be federal funding around transportation. So when we jump into the, then we, now that we have that package and the legislative priorities, it's gone through a vetting process, we then lobby accordingly. We assess, staff assesses the impact of proposed legislation and quantifies it as a priority one, priority two, or priority three, based upon the projected impact of the community to the city or the community. All priority one bills are heavily lobbied by the IGR manager, Elizabeth Howe, and any assessments from staff and associations. And at times elected officials or executive directors will travel to Salem to provide testimony. Priority two bills are tracked by the IGR member, manager, and Elizabeth, but main efforts come from departmental staff working with executive directors to provide that testimony when appropriate. And then priority three bills are tracked to ensure that no changes occur that could majorly impact city and community. City uses, utilizes an online web portal, bill tracker, that is integrated into the Oregon Legislative Information System. It's OLIS, is what, that's kind of, has a mean to track legislation, provide comments and positions, and communicate internally. And at this point, I'd like to recognize John Scholl, who's the executive assistant for Kristi Hammett and who kind of led that whole process this year and provided a great deal of support for the IGR program, including managing the bill tracker system. And so it's really, as Chief Currents was talking about, data-led policing, the bill tracker system is really starting to help us get on into more of a data-assisted legislative process. So then the question becomes what, what about bills that change or introduced? And to maintain efficacy, we apply the priorities to the bill. And if they fit, we lobby accordingly. But if there's not a clear nexus, staff consults with the city manager and executive team. Depending upon the item, the city manager will work directly with mayor and council to determine the best course of action. Throughout this process, individual counselors or the IGR committee can request that a particular bill be reviewed and discussed by either the IGR committee or the full city council. And this can be to simply inform, but more most often to take a position. And these instances would follow the normal council request process to pull in your colleagues to place on a work session or introduce a motion for council discussion or action at a, at a work session. And so an example of that was when Councilor Snolink requested council's statement in support of Senate Bill 1574, the carbon fee, and House Bill 4036, which then was transitioned on into Senate Bill 1547 regarding renewable energy. So then that takes us on into then what increased communications, really keeping people informed. And so, you know, the operating ethos is well-informed to make quality decisions. And this is to be applied to all of our stakeholders, mayor, council, IGR, city manager and executive staff, elected representatives, eternal agency, external agency staff, community stakeholders, and the general public. To accomplish this, IGR program staff met with IGR members individually and key staff from across the organization to identify what those key priorities are, obtain input on the process, and then highlight any concerns for the session. This information was synthesized and then created the legislative priorities document that was then shared internally with IGR committee and council. So we're communicating, getting that information. Prior to the session, starting, IGR committee, council, and executive managers and legislative coordinators were either briefed directly or via memo to review, discuss, and/or comment on the priorities in the process. So it's once again, kind of this no surprises approach. Once the session started, there was daily, if not hourly, communication between IGR program staff and lead staff, elected officials, and community partners as necessary. Additionally, the IGR manager provided a weekly email update to mayor, council, and executive managers, plus a separate, more detailed version of that email went on out to legislative coordinators with more information cogent to their needs, germane to their needs. These updates included links to actual legislation, the alignment with council goals, and a brief status check on the individual legislation. So I hope that that was good, and if not, we can also update and revise that in future sessions. Post-session, we continue to provide quality communications, including the signee-die email, this work session, and planned wrap-up meeting with our legislative coordinators at the end of March. And in that, we'll evaluate the final bills, which ones are directly impacting the city, who's going to be the lead in tracking the rule writing, which is, you know, getting that thing to the finish to make sure that Eugene's concerns are managed, and what responses are needed administratively by the city to be in compliance with the new laws. So how are we making sure that our codes and our rules are aligned? Additionally, IGR staff will continue to work on a Eugene objectives document, and that's really to showcase specific policy and project priorities across the organization. And that is an effort to proactively prepare for the 2017 legislative session. So it's really an opportunity for us to say, what does Eugene want? And then educate our legislative representatives over the next six to nine months. In closing, it is our belief that this session, we efficiently represented the interests of the city of Eugene without straining resources and making the best use of our relationships with other entities. We were successful in keeping council and staff informed of legislation and also presented a clear process and framework to work from. So before we jump on into the United Front, I'd like to, well, open that for questions.
You ready for questions?
Yep.
Okay, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I see in the issue statement for today's work session that besides what you just said, there, there would be a short summary on the priority legislation from the short session?
Yeah.
I don't see that in the materials and.
Yeah, that we've got, I can answer any questions, but I think that everything was encapsulated in that signee-die, the last email that we sent on out regarding the individual bills that we were tracking.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So if there is a specific question.
So there's nothing beyond that?
At this point, I think it would be more redundant and we utilize our time appropriately.
Thanks. I just have a couple other questions. There's a, if we look at attachment A, down near the bottom, the United Front trip to DC, it says that the delegation met with a number of fellow agencies to discuss Eugene's fiber project. And I was just wondering, who did they met with and were any funding, any funding opportunities that we don't know about, were any identified?
Yeah, and I can get into that in our, in our part two around the United Front.
I see, okay. All right, that's the next part, all right. Oh, there's one other thing here. It mentions a current brownfields grant. What does that refer to?
So the, the brownfields coalition is a, is an existing coalition between city of Springfield, city of Eugene, and Lane County that is operated out of our community development division. And this would be going for round two of funding. So the round one was really to identify brownfields and do initial analysis. And then the round two is to really try to pull federal funds on in for cleanup and additional work.
Great, okay. I, for some reason, I thought, well, gee, maybe that's referring to a specific site. That would be great. But it's not. It's for a grant to study the situation more in depth.
I think the funds that would come on in would then be eligible for specific sites. That's our intent.
Okay. And I think that's it for this first round, I believe. Oh, yeah. This is just something I noticed on the last page. Up near the top, it says, "Support implementation of recently adopted federal legislation banning the use of microbeads in personal care products." I didn't even know that such a prohibition existed.
So those came out of our wastewater treatment plant, and so wastewater division and the division manager, Michelle Cahill, is part of a national association that's focusing in on the impact of these microplastic beads that are put on into a lot of beauty and healthcare products that then end up getting aggregated within the wastewater treatment plants. And then the impacts that they have onto those facilities. And then subsequently, when they release water on into the, the river, are they still present and/or any of the substrate that's left after the digestion process?
Yeah, microbeads are going to go through the mesh, the last mesh, the last filter. And, and it's, it is a tremendous problem of, you know, pharmaceuticals being flushed and all kinds of stuff. And so, okay, just thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any, yes, Alan, on this, on this in particular?
I very much appreciate it and like the emails. My only comment about that would be do more of them. I thought they were informative and kept us informed of what was going on. Could you clarify the, the one bill on the, on the HB 4126, which is the expanding, the allow cities to use existing process to expand the UGB? Talk about that for just a second.
For 4126?
Yeah, the UGB one.
Yeah, and so that was a bill that was a statutory fix to a bill that had been passed two years previously in 2013, that during the rule writing, the DLCD identified that they needed to have a statutory fix, not just the rule fix, or the, the writing the rules. And so that was then legal Oregon cities, city of Springfield, city of Bend, and also city of Eugene would have been impacted because it was about communities that were in the midst of writing their, and updating their urban growth boundaries and what rules would apply. And so it was just really a timing piece.
So it allowed us to continue on the process that we're doing under the old set of rules and not start over.
Yep.
Essentially.
Yes.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Only comment I want to make, and then I think we'll move on to the next thing, is that I really appreciate it and want to call attention to the inclusionary zoning bill passing, getting rid of the prohibition. So I think, we do not yet know how and under what conditions we might use it, but it does create the opportunity to think about that and use that as one tool in trying to address our, our housing needs. So it's a, it's a very significant thing for, in particular Portland, I think, right now. But it, but in terms of what we need to do, it gives us options we didn't have before. So that's a great thing.
Where does that go, right? Where does that go next? How does?
It has.
I know, but what happened, who does the rules?
Oh.
So it'll head on into rulemaking and I think it'll be housing community services. And so that'll be, like, that's kind of the intent of our wrap-up meeting with staff is to say, okay, who's on first base on these different issues and tracking rules and making sure that we're kept abreast of, of the different changes.
So real quickly, Chris and then George.
Yeah, just real fast, I know that Claire has asked for a work session on renter protections and things like that, the larger issue. And I know that the legislature provided some fixes, but not all fixes. It seemed to John Van Lanninghand give a presentation of what, what happened. For that conversation, is it possible for you to provide us with kind of a breakdown of what passed to the legislation, what was compromised in the legislation, and what was left not taken care of, so that when we have this conversation, we'll kind of know what the state has already fixed, so we don't talk about stuff that we don't need to? to? Would be helpful.
Yes, we can add that.
Thank you.
And George.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just very quickly, the, yeah, I was really encouraged by the inclusionary zoning legislation. It just removes the prohibition of cities talking about it. I mean, we couldn't even discuss it as an option. And Oregon was, it's my understanding that the only other state that had such a ridiculous law in place was Texas. So I, I love Texas, but I'm glad we're not in the category, in this particular category with them anymore. And I think the idea is, is not to, you know, have a statewide rule that fits all, you know, but it's like each, each town will develop, if they choose to, and many won't. And I don't know if we will, I hope we do, but if we, you know, but each town will be allowed to create their own rules, and not just have it like a state mandate that says you got to do it this way.
Thanks.
So maybe we can combine that with that broader discussion that we're planning to have on what's going on locally in terms of our housing options that can-
Oh, yeah, the PHB update and all of that.
Yeah, just kind of give us, kind of get the whole grounding and the issue in preparation for budget discussions. Yep. Okay, so now-
Okay.
-United Front.
United Front. And so the two documents that you have are the traditional United Front booklet in front of you, and then we also put together a more of a, lack of a better term, the wow piece. I hope you're wowed. That we put together to really try to, you know, a lot of times when you go into these meetings, there's, you know, having them flip through a large mighty tome of United Front priorities is not as easy, whereas you can give them something that's got a visual and high points. And really what the United Front partners had worked through was a focus in on the River District's project and area as a key place for investment of time and energy, and as a priority area. And it also aligned with the catalytic project that came out of the Lane Livability Consortium and work there with a number of federal agencies. And so we really wanted to continue that federal, you know, showing the, the impact of the federal funds that had come on into the community, and trying to leverage those for future efforts. So the United Front trip took place from February 1st to February, February 3rd this year, and attending members from city of Eugene included myself, Mayor Piercy, and Denny Bro's, Community Development Manager. Lane County Springfield School District, Lamont Lane, and city of Springfield also sent staff and elected representatives. As I'd said, the collaborative focus on the River District's projects and the various items within that, and so for example, the cross-laminated timber project within our investing in manufacture and communities program or partnership, IMCP. Economic development, and so basically the brownfields aspects, and then also downtown fiber. Housing, 2021 preparations, security funding, natural resources, and recreation enhancements. And so those are a lot of the main themes. And so there's three days packed with agency and federal delegation meetings, and started with a preparatory day with Smith, Dawson, and Andrews. And so I kind of will walk through a few photos, and it'll share with you some of the, so here is at the end of the, at the end of the day of preparation meetings, about four and a half hours in of walking through what we're going to say for the next two days. And then one of the high points was that both Mayor Piercy and Commissioner Bozovich attended a White House forum on earthquake early warning systems. And so here's Mayor Piercy before the Eisenhower Administration Building here with Commissioner Bozovich and University of Oregon's Board Chair Chuck Lilis. At the, at the earthquake summit, this is Secretary of the Interior Sally Jewell talking specifically about earthquake early warning systems. And here, if you see down into the lower, well, or in the middle, the left-hand corner, there, middle of the screen, I guess, and the bottom, Eugene's logo, and this was prominently displayed in terms of all of the different partners that were providing action on earthquake or early warning systems and partnerships. And so then they specifically pulled out Eugene's work with E-Web and the University of Oregon, and some of our resilience work, which is nice to hear. A busy day, this is Mayor Piercy handling a phone call in the middle of the summit for a KMTR interview, and I thought it was inappropriate because right next to the, the old White House barber chair. So, and then here's, I think this is Andrew Nelson from the State of Oregon Disaster Preparedness Program, and so we met with him, and he gave a presentation. We talked a little bit about what was going on in Lane County and Eugene. Later on that day, and so this was a fairly busy day, started out at the White House, went over to Senate chambers and met with Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley, and even Denny Bro was able to provide Merkley something to, to write down on. And this was specifically about our brownfields and our, and our fiber project, and so we caught the senator's ear on that.
Writing down what Denny said.
We're hoping. And then here is with an assistant administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency, Matty Stanislau, who is in the middle there, and he was really focused in on the CLT and the IMCP projects. And they also bring a good number of brownfields funds on into programs. And so we were talking with him about some of the River District's interests we have. And here's towards the end of the day with Congressman DeFazio in his office where everybody gets to pack on in and talk. And then kind of the last highlights here is Mayor Piercy had given him a, a photo of Eugene framed, and then in the following photo later on that evening, there was, Mayor Piercy was recognized by Congressman DeFazio for her 12 years of service, and then also Smith, Dawson, and Andrews also recognized her for, her leadership as the dean of the United Front delegation. So that was very, very appropriate and good. And I think just in closing, as always, the strength of the trip is in the enhanced relationships between the representative agencies and local governments. And I think that it was either I ran into Commissioner Farr at the transportation meeting last week, and he, he said, you know, it, it's interesting where you travel across the country to have discussions that help out the local community, so. And with that, we'll close it and answer any questions you have around the United Front trip.
So I'll just add a little bit to that and say that I have to really give a lot of credit to Smith, Dawson, because they managed to get us all those appointments that we needed to have, and they were just recovering from an enormous snowstorm, so it was, it was no mean feat to get us into all the places that we needed to go to. And we had really good productive meetings. Ethan did a great job, and Denny made, did us proud, and I want to appreciate our partners. Mayor Lundberg and Commissioner Bozovich, everybody, I think, really worked well as a team, and had our stuff down pretty good. And, and so, and then that picture you stare is Congressman DeFazio gave me a flag that had been flying over the Capitol, and so it's very cool, yeah. Yeah, it was very nice. Anyway, I, I think those trips are very valuable. You get a lot of important information that you'll be able to use all year and build on. We will probably have a gathering of federal officials here in the spring over cross-laminated timber because of that conversation, and their, their desire to come out here. So those things really do matter, and they build on each other year after, after year, and then you're in their minds when those funding opportunities move forward. So I think it's a very good investment. And I just think I should add, it is probably the only time that all of us are in the room together, sometimes in a very casual way, which is really good for cementing community relationships and those kind of things, too. So it does all feel like we're heading in the same direction to do better. And that's, any questions, anybody? Okay, thanks, Susan, very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.